Alright, so motion to reopen, actually is a motion to open session. Second, show of hands, stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Put a special recognition out for our Teacher of the Year, Christie Monroe at the primary. Our HAWC Award winners, Deb Paget and Christie Wiltz, Judge Nathan Stewart and Julie Ryder. And did I not go far enough?
Uh...
For Jerry Parrish, I didn't speak up. Actually, there's some problem with my eyes on the phone, let me move over there, please. Support staff, Person of the Year, Karen Schaefer. Okay, junior high sports in the 7th grade quiz bowl. Hillsboro Junior High is proud to announce that our athletic teams have performed well in the field of competition and more importantly, in the classroom. Our coaches and teachers use athletics as a way to motivate student athletes to be successful in the classroom and build a healthy disposition towards school. Here's a list of each team's GPA for the respective season. Football 3.0, wrestling 3.1, 7th grade boys basketball 3.2, boys cross country 3.3, cheer 3.3, 8th grade volleyball 3.5, 7th grade girls basketball 3.5, 7th grade volleyball 3.6, girls cross country 3.6, palms 3.6, 8th grade girls basketball 3.7, and 8th grade boys basketball 3.7. Way to go! I'd like to congratulate the members of the 7th grade quiz bowl team for their first-place finish on March 3rd. Team competed in an academic trivia contest against nine other county schools and won the event in a six-question tiebreaker to claim the first-place plat. The team was coached by Ms. Robin Babulka and Ms. Erin Faith. A special thank you to Mrs. Faith who coordinated the event and did an amazing job. The members of the 7th grade championship team include Gracie Crisco, Allison Dietrich, Donald Halupka, Mark Moore, Haley Daniels, Rhanna Hart, Jake Mason, and Michael Wright. What's going on in the intermediate?
Well, we're all focused on the math test prep right now.
Okay.
We start on Monday, the first group, so focusing on that. We would like to congratulate Cody Harrison, one of our 5th graders, and his mom is at the elementary. He is the turkey-calling state champion for youth.
Is trivia night, isn't it tomorrow night?
Saturday night, sir.
Saturday night, can you tell us about that?
Sure, Alvarian Hawks are sponsoring trivia night to raise for our future program, which would be inclusive for students in special needs, so we're looking forward to that. It's a sponsored event, so I think it's 20 tables they've already sold, and it's at the Civic Center, so it changed from being at the Casey Hall Civic Center.
Very good. Alright, thank you. We have visitors to address the board. Mrs. Cuddy, if you'd like, you'll have three minutes to address the Board of Education. Please limit your comments to topics that are appropriate to bring before the board. Board President may interrupt you if your comments stray into an area that should not be discussed in an open session. Missouri Sunshine Law limits the ability of board members to respond to your comments consequently, unless the board will engage in a discussion of your topic during this meeting.
I'm here concerning public education as workforce training, college and career readiness, and school to work or common core, which is a theory that there is only one right way to receive well-known. Starts with early childhood education, which even begins this path to grow, ideally at birth. It overrides the desire of the parents and students themselves, boxes in students' inability to change their set direction. It commits to an expanded initiative for a global workforce, collects data on each child from work through workforce that is shared and not secure, does not promote freedom of choice. According to student tests, by 8th grade or sooner, he or she will be labeled as positioned for post-secondary and career success or not. Missouri is one of seven states promoting the WorkKeys test developed by the ACT writers. It is a business plan, a public-private partnership, not an education plan or approved by the public, certainly not families in their own district. It is a line of curriculum to workforce needs, supported by the Chamber of Commerce, not an individual's needs. There is supply and demand as a goal. Teachers are talented at their job, but there is a gap between the teachers and industry. A national career readiness certificate comes from the ACT program called Certified Workforce Communities. Businesses that sign onto this program promise to only consider candidates with a readiness certificate when interviewed. The ACT test is a mandatory requirement for all 11th grade students to take the ACT, the company that was sued for selling student data and collected from its college entrance exam. Workkeys is so far optional, but lots of local businesses in the area require a certificate already for an applicant to even be considered for employment. If the student who is tested does not get a satisfactory grade on this test, no certificate is awarded, which means no job. This will expand to all workers of all ages who in many cases in some areas apply for unemployment to qualify the two-month test. If they cannot do well on the new test, which is determined by updated random knowledge specified by ACT, no job or funds will be available for them either, no matter how qualified they may be. Schooling of our children is not supposed to be a business model. Money is the draw to these programs which turn our children into commodities, not intelligent individuals. I suggest a radical approach. Some students can refuse the testing, and it is not law. Pressure the district to refuse government funds. It is these funds that require districts to submit to regulations and laws of control of local families and taxpayers. It is the love of money of the elites that run our district that shows our children tend to involve in virtue.
Next on the list is action items by consent. Is there a motion to approve the action items by consent? Mr. Harrison, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Stewart, any discussion? Here you know, discussion, show of hands to approve, 7-0. Next on the list is reports. Dr. Corman?
I sent a report home to you for review. A couple of things that I want you to focus on within that report, a couple of other items that I want to hand out to you this evening. First being, when you glance down through there on the appeal file for Missouri membership to Smart Balance Consortium, that's information that we're waiting to get more on, which is Sback, and how we'll participate in that if approved or by the House, Senate, as well as the Attorney General. So once that information is heard, we will get more information to you on it. One of the things that's interesting, if you read the Kansas City Star, is stop bullying or lose funding. They're trying to tie bullying to student funding. If you heard about the vicious attack of the 12-year-old autistic boy at Liberty Schools, and it's really carried a lot of, it's opened the eyes of administrators in our district specifically in making sure that none of our kids are bullied, and when those instances come up, we take them seriously, investigate them judiciously, and make sure those kids are kept safe. What I handed out to you just now, a few things I'd like to call your attention to. First being, we have more policy, which is DN1AP, which is administrative procedure, and what we have, and Mr. Marino, I think is in the back, but a school in St. Louis Hancock Place has contacted the district about the purchase of the band uniforms because they're a little strapped for cash and can't afford to purchase those uniforms. They've asked if we would consider selling those uniforms, and they're interested in 75 uniforms at $60 apiece for them to pay to refurbish rather than have to go out and purchase branded uniforms, which would bring in around $4,500, to which the district would then use to put toward the new band uniforms that you agreed to purchase last meeting. However, what we want you to be aware of is that the district does have the surplus auction, that all properties go for the surplus auction. I put this policy here for you to review, item number four, that gives the district the availability to take those products and put them to certain institutions, but there are two important things we have to do. First is give public notice of the sale and the agreed upon sum, and post that in the local newspaper for the public to see. So we're considering doing that. We want to get some more information to you, hopefully bring to April the 14th, board meeting, so you can see kind of what their proposed plan is for you to agree to do that and incorporating this policy. And to be honest with you, in the past, our surplus auction does not bring, right, Mr. Best, doesn't really bring much monetary compared to what you paid for the property. And my belief is if we can help a fellow institution of education, we need to look to do that. Also want to point out to you legislative voice that just came out on March 20th, a couple of things that are very important is a House Bill 42, which needs to be ratified in the Senate, and it's a bill from Representative Wood. This is one of the fixes for student transfers. One of the big things that they're trying to do is some, rather than looking at it as a district unaccredited, because if one building's unaccredited, the district falls into that category, is have, if a student is attending an unaccredited building, they have the right to transfer within their district before they're forced to transfer out. Currently, as you've heard, in Normandy, they have about 487, last count, student transfers, which is 20% of their population. 80% are staying in Normandy. If they reach 500, the district will be bankrupt. So what will happen is those students, that district will then be divided among those schools in the surrounding area. So this is kind of part of that fix. There are two issues with that, is the virtual schools option and the expansion of charter schools, and there's still a lot of information out there in committee conversations, so I'll try to keep you abreast of what's going on there. Senate Bill 161 talks about anti-bullying policies and provisions related to destruction of student promotion and student retention. So there's several bills in here, you'll see me highlighting. One that's really caught my attention is Senate Bill 273 and 271, which is US citizenship tests that would make changes basically to the way schools assess students in Missouri and US Constitution tests. So again, we'll keep you apprised of that. Also, the State Board of Education established the minimum graduation requirements for career and technical schools, so I've highlighted that bill for you to research as well. In your packet, which I'm not going to read to you, you can see there was a version of Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 42, which are the fix for, well, I don't use the word fix, the proposed fix for the student issue when it comes to unaccredited schools in Normandy. House Bill 42 on the right side of that page tells you more information about that. So back to my board packet, there are some information items I want you to stay abreast of, which are the emerging issues, which is on down toward the bottom of that document, that discusses trending emerging issues in education that you might want to stay abreast of and to read, and also the upcoming events that we have highlighted, and if you're on those standing committees, whether it be the insurance or the budget, you'll see those dates down there highlighted for you, so mark that for me, please.
Mr. Harrison?
How do we arrive at $60 apiece on these band uniforms?
Well, I think it'd be great to ask Mr. Marino that.
Mr. Marino?
Yes, sir.
How'd you arrive at $60 for them to...
Originally, we talked about between $60 and $75. After taking into consideration the age of the band uniforms being over 10-plus years old, plus the work that some of them will need to get repaired, we felt that $60 was more than reasonable, it was about half the cost of a brand-new uniform. Hancock thought it was more than generous, and they have agreed to that. But we took into consideration wear and tear, what it was going to take to repair the uniforms, and again, like I said, the age of the uniforms to come to that price.
How many uniforms do we buy?
How many are we buying? We're going to buy 120.
If I go to buy something used, that's just me. If it's a $20 item, I give less than half, about half, is what I usually try to get.
Sure.
That's around, or more.
I may misspeak here, Mr. Harrison, if I do, I'll let you know, but I believe for our new band uniforms, we're spending approximately...
Thirty-seven thousand?
No, $139 a uniform, somewhere in that area. So we are a little less than half with this band uniform. And in talking to Mr. Blair, getting information from him as well, it's kind of the standard procedure schools have done this in the past that he knows of.
I think it's probably a little bit more money than we'll get if we put it up on the surplus auction, because there's not going to be a lot of people running by saying, "I want one of them for money."
No, but I...
You think we're not asking enough?
I just don't think, $100 bucks, and then let him come down, bring us down. That's 7,500, and we're spending, we're spending $37,000?
140 times 120.
Roughly $38,000 or $39,000 is what we're spending.
Just give us a 30. If he was getting half of what it was, it'd be $18,000.
We're not selling them half of what we're buying. I mean, we're selling them half of what we're buying, that's what they want, is 60. Their band's not as large as ours. We're not selling all of the 120 uniforms.
I missed some, I'm sorry.
We have 120 uniforms, but they only get 60. So, excuse me, 75, we sell them for $60. They don't need all 120 uniforms because their band's not that large.
Correct.
And for an extra $40, they could buy brand-new.
True.
If we were going to charge them $100, we're getting our brand-new ones for $139, so that's so close that it's like...
I'd just like to get more money.
I'm trying to feel like, if they're offering $60...
I'm sure they're picking the uniforms and...
I would.
Always cut something in half, then let them decker with you.
They also, Mr. Harrison, they have to take a tinsel uniform, have the Hillsboro band removed from it, then have their own embroidery done to it, things of that nature, so that was taken into consideration as well. We're just fortunate that our colors and their colors are the same.
What school is that?
Hancock Place.
Lean back.
Yeah, that's where old Charles's wife was. That's where Charles's wife was.
Alright.
That's all I want to know.
Mr. Best?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Harrison.
There's a briefing over last month here. Again, in case we did not clarify this last month, we did get the switch tired working on the, all the fuses and so forth. We haven't had any problems since then, so everything's been well with that procedure.
How much did it cost us?
I have not seen the invoice on that yet at this time, sir, but we can tell you right now that the fuses themselves, probably the two we had purchased, is right about $1,500 just for the fuses.
So about $3,000 for the...
Probably roughly, if I had to guess, between $27 and $3,000.
Better than $80,000.
I'm sorry?
That's better than $80,000.
Guess it less, sir. Definitely fixed some of the problems. High school-wise, we have got the sports complex lighting up to standard now. The light fixture that had been on in October has been put back in place now. We did reangle it a little bit since we have sports behind the complex now where we didn't a year ago. We did reangle that one, so now we have lighting toward behind the press box as well now, so that worked out really nice, actually. So those are all in place and taken care of, so we're good there for this year. All the elevator inspections that we listed last month, they did pass, or have all been tested and approved by the state, so that was good. And the month of February, we told 64 workers being completed for the district, and we are in the process of now by April 10th, having all the information for cleaning purposes for the summer, and keeping coordination with summer school and events that would occur during the summer, so we should have all that detail. For your information, in case you have seen someone out here around the district, there's numbers and so forth on the outside of the building as well as on the inside of the building. The outside numbers are 12 inches in diameter in height, and the inside ones are set up at four. Those are designed for us with the local authorities as well as the state authorities that may have to be called in if needed be, any type of emergency. This is a program that Mr. Cruz set up to help us with, Mr. Ramsey, and we've now completed that assignment, and they are reflected. You can drive through it, but they're all dark or whatever, they do shine up, and they'll know which door to come out of. Those are used for direction tracking by the local authorities if necessary. So it should be a good program for our school district, so that's all I had to say.
What about the gaps in the intermediate building? The front was freezing.
Oh, giving you an update on that, sir?
Yeah.
We're, at this time, the update on that is we have had sheet metal come out now, which is the units that handle all of our heating systems. There was five of the six pressure sensors that were bad in our units up on top of the roof. We did have that problem once before, actually, right off the bat, almost actually, so many sensors were replaced back then. We have replaced five of the six, and it has put the building back into a positive to a zero balance of pressure, which is good. But we have not solved the whole problem yet. We are still working with the architect to get the right construction company come out. They said they will when it warms up and stays warm, and they will be looking at, from the outside inward, there is a big gap between the walls. Supposed to be a four-inch gap because of air and keeping the moisture off your brick. Unfortunately, there's another gap behind that that actually is between the walls. We have taken an outside soffit out and seen it, we have pictures of it, and they will be out to keep working on that program. So hopefully, we'll have that totally corrected by the end of the summer, of course. Right now, the architecture's thinking that we're probably going to go with some type of spray foam, and that will close all that up, but it'll also give an R factor for more of the insulation. So we'll keep the board posted as we get that information, as they get out here and give us that information.
Mr. Harrison?
Are you in charge of security?
I am not in charge of security, sir, no. I do work closely with them, sir, but they do not fall under my control.
I had something I wanted to bring up, but he don't work for this firm.
I just...
We'll talk later. Thank you, Mr. Best.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Best?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to thank Director Stewart, he had some questions on the water usage at the primary building. It seemed to be double of the other buildings.
Yes.
That's because it waters the soccer field right there. At least that's what I was told last year, as I asked the same question.
It does control that, the man's...
Yeah, let's go ahead. Give a plan here.
I do have some information on that, and I would be delighted to pass some of this to...
I forwarded that email on, so he had all that reviewed.
Okay, did you forward the one that gave you all the breakdown?
Yes, sir, I did.
I think, correct.
But I have one, if you want to review it.
How much was your electric bill?
Water bill, sir? This is the water factors in the primary. What we was looking at was the highest usage percentages and the dollars and gallons they were using. We kind of reviewed it for the whole past year of 2014, showing that it used over 1 million gallons of water, and it was a question because it's almost 27% of our water usage. So that's where the question was arise. But I did try to help compare it a little bit for this report to the high school usage, and for the same period of time, the high school used 1.9 mil, putting in about 46% of usage. So again, we kind of tried to compare that to help show that number, and the factors, we did run a meter test. Chris Goodman and I ran a meter test on both the meters at the primary. There's leak sensors on those meters, and almost all our meters in the district have leak sensors on them, and the leak sensor showed no leaks. The usage showed was even, what the amount of water we put through, so unfortunately, very hot.
I'd forgotten about the soccer field.
Soccer field.
Yeah, but yeah. Soccer field is on there as well.
You got the soccer field, right? Right as you come in on the ice scope on the right.
It goes just double?
Well, no, I'd say it's on the primary, it's on the primary meter. That's why the primary has so much water running through it.
It does use a... And a factor too, and also for the primary as well, has to understand that every kindergarten room has a toilet in their rooms, and the teachers and so forth do a great job trying to get them to make sure they take the potty breaks and so forth, teaching them to be, you know, on that, on order. So there's a lot of water usage in that, that building based on that too, as well. They teach them how to keep their hands clean, wash your hands and so forth, so it's a lot of usage, but it's just for sharing information.
Does the meter, is, do we get charged a sewer?
No, it doesn't charge it on that.
Thanks for the update.
Very much. Thank you very much.
And next is the April 215 Board of Education meeting, Dr. Corman?
You have in your board packet, the April 2015 Board of Education meeting will be moved up, be conducted on Tuesday, April 10th, 2000, excuse me, April 14th, 2015. And with that, I also want to mention that from our perspective, it's important to know that that is going to push our board packets back to some type of delay, so please be prepared for that. The turnaround, we're going to be out for Good Friday as well as Easter Monday, so it's going to push us two days behind, so your board packet might come out, Mr. Bethan, what did we say, that round of ninth, eighth and ninth timeframe, so please be aware of that. And also, it's going to be different for our HR recommendations that are coming out. That gives Dr. Isaacson only two weeks for the resignations that you receive to try to get those positions hired. Otherwise, it's going to push us to six weeks down to the end of May before we can hire quality candidates. We might lose some good people. Our next option would be, and that would be at the 14th, if you wanted to do so, is have a special meeting specifically for hiring employees. So, but we can talk about that a later date, we'll do what we can, because the reason it pushes us back is we have to post in accordance of policy five days in-house before we open it up to outside external candidates. So that's just, just an update there for you. So as you can see, that April meeting will be on the 14th, 2015, and that is because the law directs the board to approve the election, certify the election results. And that is because the law directs the board to approve the election, certify the election results fourteen days, no, later than fourteen days after the election.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
No unfinished business at this time. New business, do I have a motion to approve the bills for payment in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand ninety-five dollars and eighty-five cents, Mr. Harrison? Do I have a second? Mr. Stewart? Discussion? Here you go, and show hands to approve. Next on the list is the approval of the two thousand and fifteen sixteen school calendar, which was revised. The school, we were in open session from five-thirty for people to come in and get input in regards to the school calendar. The calendar had to be revised from the one that was published with the original packet. Secondary to a couple of days that...
One was what?
Had to go from a two, early out to a three-hour early out, I believe, is what you said, Chris. Is there a motion to approve the...
I've got a question.
Okay.
A second so we can be discussion.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Harrison.
I thought you was going to put that all on one day.
I did, but there are two days, as I told you in the calendar, that one being a half-day is the last day of school. And the other half-day was, I believe, in December. I'll pull the calendar. November, thank you. Here it is. In November, for Thanksgiving. And so what we did was, the state law requires now half-day be four hours rather than that three. So that's why it says now a two-hour early dismissal rather than a three-hour early dismissal.
And the day was lengthened by an hour.
I've got several questions. This is changing from one hundred and seventy-four student contact days to one hundred and sixty-eight student contact days. How many minutes per day is being added?
Three minutes per day is being added. I'm looking at my resident mathematician, Mr. Allison.
Well...
And also Mrs. Hafner. Missy Hafner was on, on the calendar committee. Anyone else? I don't think anyone else here that was on that committee. But we did have to add three minutes, and what that did was allow us to build up time in case we have to let out for snow, water main break.
How much wiggle room does that give?
Well, about now, according to that calendar, opposed to you...
About twenty-five or something?
Ten sixty-nine is how many hours you have built. You have to go a thousand and forty-four. So you have twenty-five hours built in. And as long as we make the four-hour minimum, you can let score.
Right. My concern is that three hours or three minutes a day, is that really going to make up for students' the six days of coming back?
Very good question.
Class instruction time, because I know as a teacher, six days is almost a four unit for me, or what?
I, we totally understand that. Our last calendar, we had, help me out, Mr. Allison, I'm trying to pull up my data here.
Administrators thoughts?
We've had, what we had was thirteen half-days in our last calendar.
We'll actually be going more full days at school. And I can tell you, if you come by the junior high on our half-days, we're rotating classes every twenty-four years.
Oh, I know. I've been in that situation.
From an educational standpoint, you'll have more full days with this calendar. And we basically are taking those half-days out. If we still have the same number of days, if we still have the half-days in there, it would not be as productive. But by moving to having more full days with this calendar than the one we're on right now, I think it'll actually be better for teaching.
And another good point to make was...
There's one hundred and sixty-eight full days here versus, I think we have one sixty...
Six?
Six or five.
Yeah.
It's like one or two extra full days in the year.
Actually, student contact?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's another thing, we looked at this calendar, was because our CSET survey, as well as our parents on the CSET committee, we done, and I think, well, Mrs. Welker, a few others on that committee, the discussion from the parent's standpoint was, planning was difficult on that half-day early out. But more importantly than that was, the parents felt that it was hurting attendance when you just have a half-day on a Friday, that the kids weren't coming at all. So they were losing out even on more than just those two full days.
So, and if I remember right from the survey, you know, teachers were wanting more time to work in their classrooms and work with their teams, vertical teams, et cetera, et cetera. So what is the difference in P...? I know there's a lot more PD time built in, full-day PD time. But how much of that is actually going to be teacher time versus what we have now?
Right. Mrs. Hafner's here. The discussion with us was, I don't want to put her on the spot, but...
No, I'm not going to put you on the spot.
Our PD committee hasn't met to discuss what they're going to be doing and planning until they knew exactly how many days they were going to have to work with. But I did tell Mrs. Hafner on that Thursday before Thanksgiving, right, Mrs. Hafner, that the teachers would have more time, more in-the-classroom time to work. So I know definitely that day is one that they will have in their room. As far as what the PD committee is planning, Erin Carlton was on, right, Mrs. Carlton was on our calendar committee, who told us, we won't know what to do and how to plan those days until we know how much time we're going to have. And Mrs. Rain sits in on that committee. She might be able to speak to that as well.
And we are looking at, you know, dividing that time up so that we still can provide in-service time as well as the opportunities for the teachers, but that's what we're leaning on. We haven't met yet. We were waiting for the calendar, and so we've got a couple of days coming up that we're going to try and meet.
Because that's, I've been in that situation, and oftentimes, time that originally was going to be for us to actually use it with our departments, with our grade levels, et cetera, all of a sudden got rid of away.
And we definitely want to, the teachers are wanting that PLC, well, the time with the department, time with grade level and vertical time, and so we want to make sure we get that in there.
Vertical time was a big thing we talked about. And also, my big welcome back, hoorah day, right?
Yeah.
Mrs. Hafner, we moved that from Monday back to Wednesday. And that way, it gives those teachers that have open house that Monday and Tuesday more, more time for them. So that's another thing that we talked about. So it's important we get them that time, and we understand that.
And it's going, so that they're going to get as much time to equal the additional PD time that's built in?
I...
Maybe not.
Well, again, that goes to...
That's my concern. I don't know what you mean.
Well, how much more additional PD time is this calendar providing?
I'm not, I was looking at how much more. I'm not sure exactly as far as hours, but we felt like with the full day, that we could actually give a better... We won't have as many of the part-time days where we're doing, like this year, we've done the assessment for learning. So we'll have fewer times for that, and then they'll have more opportunity to put up, you know, to develop their, like I said, grade level and their content areas and things. And I don't really want to speak to saying exactly what we're going to do because the, I mean, not because I don't want to, but because I don't really know what the PDC is bringing in from the buildings and what they, the teachers are wanting to do with some of that time. So, and it's been vertical, you know, vertical has been a big thing. They're wanting to meet vertically. And so that's, go ahead.
And one of the things, I guess it's PD, but it's going to be working with the knee and the U instruction and showing how to maximize our time there so that teachers, when they leave there, that's in care of. They're not having distress about that. They can go do what they do.
We're wanting to share that time to where we give the support they need on that knee, and then also any other support they need as far as instruction or assessment or whatever the case may be. And we do a survey on that as well, so that'll be a combined. And the professional development committee usually works with that, develops the timeframe for the full days. And then that's out there in the professional development manual or the handbook, so.
So to say that they're going to have more time equal to is difficult because with the new standards from the unit of instruction that's going to be done and new PD plans, that's the whole point in getting this more meaningful time together. One thing our teachers said is that it's so fractured and they're so rushed. And a half-day and try to get everything in, that they're just, it's not as meaningful. So that was the focus from that step.
I understand that, but my concern was, you know, we didn't want to turn it into an administrative type of day instead of, you know, I need to work with my department.
Sure.
Because my opinion is the best PD are your coworkers and sharing, you know, what you do.
Right. In the past, it's been difficult, as Mrs. Rain spoke to, the vertical teaming. It's so important to be able to have that vertical team meetings. But our buildings, the way they're set up, our time schedules, it's always been difficult to make that work. So that, again, we will be able to report to the board back, and the PDC has a better handle on what they work.
Teams usually set their times. I mean, when, like, we have our music visit, you know, English, you know, the math. Anyone, those that want to do vertical, the, you know, they set their time during those days. That's one of the things we'll do. We'll say, this is open for vertical time, and, you know, you can say your time.
So will we be able to see a comparison of PD time this year versus next year? To see if it really is, well, being assessed?
Right, right.
Sure.
One of the other big advantages, and there may be in pure minutes, more PD time. But one of the key items is, we've had trainings within the school day. And our teachers are pulled out of their classrooms so much. And that's, it's a concerted effort to, like a CPI training that our special ed teachers need to have. Instead of doing that on a school day when there's students in a classroom, that'll be on a PD day where they're, we're maximizing that day without...
More instructional minutes, right, that are actually instructional.
To save those sub-costs, key focus.
Professional, professional learning community, what do they do now?
I'm sorry?
Professional learning community, what do they do now?
What they usually do, they talk about the data, the things that they, like, test results from the kids or strategies. If it's a department meeting like English, or if it's a grade level meeting, they talk about common assessments.
Teachers.
Teachers do, yes. And they develop their own agendas, what they want to discuss. There may be something in particular that they've talked about as a building that they go back to their teams and talk about. But we started that again this year because we felt like the teachers were not getting enough time to actually discuss and collaborate among themselves.
I could be wrong, but I heard that they didn't do that much anymore in the professional learning community.
Our teachers work hard in the professional...
No, I didn't say that.
No, no, I'm just saying, well, I'm just saying, our teachers do work in those professional learning communities.
What I said was, I heard they don't do much in there anymore.
Of course, because they didn't have enough time.
Yeah.
Right, and that's why they just, that's why we want to...
Time to put into, into disaggregating the data. That's what this calendar is doing.
They put agendas together, the things they want to work on. But that's what I want to say. They do work on an agenda. They put things together. They have it organized. And then they are developing, it might be a common assessment for their grade level or for a certain subject area, but they need more time rather than dividing three hours in two or three different sections. This will give them a little more time to have that to work together.
I remember it was about our reading and getting everything set up for that.
Right, and we are going to have our...
And then discuss what, about our kids going from one grade to another and forming the other teachers.
The transition that we have from grade to grade, that will be one of the things that teachers do want to discuss and how they can bridge that gap.
I sat in here that you could be on a board for twenty years, and all of a sudden, you don't know nothing because people change stuff on you.
Well, we'll try and have it as out there as possible, and, you know, any kind of information, like I said, the agendas are available, and we'll have a comparison at the time once we get that, you know, situated. And it's always open, you know, if something's not working, we try to make sure that we...
Are there other schools, like Jefferson County Schools, St. Lo Schools, that are doing the one sixty-eight instead of the one seventy-four?
Yes, Crystal City is. I haven't seen Crystal City. I want to say Jefferson R seven had talked about they have a two-year calendar. I can ask the administrators to get it online and check it for you real quick.
And you, I was just curious. And the full day is either that or that late start, which we thought the early... I mean, the full day was really advantageous for us with all the different buildings.
Okay. Mr. Allison says it's twenty-one more hours of PD time. Twenty-one more hours of PD time. He's my mathematician.
We can expect at least ten of those hours to be teacher time.
We've got seventy-five this year, if my math is right, compared to ninety-six, but that's true, told.
Number of PD hours.
I love...
Hours. Ninety-six hours.
Yep, I get it.
Okay. This is my open can of worms. But one of the things that I've noticed when I was going through here was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Ever since my daughter was a kindergarten, I was always jealous of Hillsborough because they got out early. And now it's a full day for staff? Did that, I mean, did that not take some heat?
It did. It did. And the reason that is there, we talked about that, and it was negotiated years ago for the teachers to be gone. But with the new agreements in place, all those other commitments are null and void in accordance to how that is written with the negotiations. That day, and the teachers were told, and this was the day Mrs. Hafner and I talked about, well, the whole committee and I discussed, was what about, can teachers leave if they want to? Yes, but they have to use leave time. In the past, they just were let go. But that is a contracted day.
Now it will.
No, 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 it's always been a contracted day.
Well, yeah, it was kind of a nice little thing that the board allowed to take place.
Well, if the board tells me that of the one hundred and eighty, and there was a time, and I don't, this was before my time, the teacher contract is actually one hundred and eighty-three days.
Correct.
And the board could not afford a particular time to give them a pay raise, so they gave them three days of holiday pay of, you don't have to be here, three days. So if the board tells me on that day, we want our teachers, that's fine, let them go, we understand. The issue was brought up this past year from our support staff that our hourly-paid employees, and that came up for those on the committee with me, and Dr. Maynor was on there, our paras, they lose pay. And that was a concern brought up last year, their negotiations, that if the teachers go, they're not here to have anybody to work with or to do things for. Therefore, if they go home, they lose money, whereas the teachers have the contract. And it was also brought up about snow days, if you remember, they brought it up as well. So, okay, so that was what started all of this. The teachers are leaving, that's a contracted day, but we can't pay the hourly people due to the Fair Labor Standards Act, right, Mrs. Genge? When they're not here, they can't get paid. So that was kind of the...
Have they ever complained about that? Has that been a concern?
That was, yes. That was an issue last year.
They brought up the snow days, but as far as...
No, they brought up...
The day before Thanksgiving?
They, yeah. They brought up all the days, I don't want to speak out of turn, you were there with me.
They spoke about those days, the ones that the teachers were able to leave because they were contracted. And then they're left with nobody to support, and, you know, they have to be there to get their salary, to get their hourly wage, and they're like, we don't like that. So let's... How would you do it differently?
I just, I hate to see that...
How would you do it differently?
A little perk change, to be very honest, after all twenty-eight years that I've been there of it. That's...
How would you do it differently?
I would have to ponder that, because I wasn't on the calendar committee, so I just saw it, so I would have to ponder.
I mean, the teachers' questions were, what can we do? And I said, that was part of the question, right, working, a little more work in your room time. That was one particular day we discussed that on. Is that right? I don't want to speak, you were with me. I see your head nodding, but...
Missy, talk.
So that's kind of what our thought process was.
So if they go home on a snow day?
If they wanted to go home on this day, they can do that. They use leave time now.
But it has to go through you. You have to prove all of them.
If it's the, since I've been here, yes, ma'am, but since I've been here, I haven't denied anyone that time off if they're with their family. I had one employee, but, for example, I want to take a step back. I had one support staff member that was gone five days. And according to the board policy, if you're gone five days consecutively in a month, it could have a negative mark on your, right, Dr. Isaacson, a negative mark on your evaluation. Doesn't mean you're getting fired, but it means it could have a negative impact when you out away from kids that long. But since the kids aren't here, and that was that big discussion that the calendar committee had. There were some that agreed, and we put it to the vote of the teachers. This was the option I gave. Right, Mrs. Hafner, we said you can lose that Friday at Labor Day. If they have this complete day off, you can have Friday at Labor Day. We can add a day on the end of the year. What was it? You remember the third option? There were three options. Oh, take the PD day, take the day at parent-teacher conferences. That was the three options. The calendar committee discussed it. We talked to the staff about it. It was pretty well split. Some wanted it the whole day off and just wanted us to add it to the end of the year. The calendar committee voted on it, and they voted to keep it the way it is. And if teachers want to leave, take, I mean, I left it to the teachers to decide what to do with the day. And that's what they decided.
Mr. Harrison?
So when you go to a calendar meeting, you guys decide how you're going to do things at calendar meetings? Like if you say, well, I'm going to take the twenty-eighth of August off, and the committee says, yeah, we can take the twenty-eighth off. Are you guys making decisions?
No. That's why it says proposed on the top of that calendar. The board decides what you're going to do. That's why you heard VCL Director Petrie, if you want that day, tell us what to do.
They wanted to come to the calendar and extend the time that they wanted off and bring it through the, through the calendar. And I think if anybody wants time to expand their time, that should come to the board, not to the calendar.
Oh, I agree. Oh, I agree. There are some rules and parameters which I have right in... There are some rules and parameters, which I have right in front of me, that's made by the law. And you saw, when you read, when you read the approved calendar, when you read your executive summary, it says how many hours you have to go, what's the daily minimum you can go. And so what the calendar committee does is decide what best fits the needs of the kids and the staff, and we work that together. I put out two calendar options for the board or for the staff to look at and vote upon. And then we come to the calendar committee, make changes where needed, and then we present that to the board for review and approval. So the board decides what we do, not the calendar committee.
Is that hybrid?
Oh, I understand. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, show of hands to approve.
Can we go back on April 14?
Yeah, do you want to change that?
I, I don't see why, if, if, if you read it.
It has to be within two weeks.
Right. But it says on the, a statement, the third Tuesday, and the third Tuesday is the 21st.
Yeah, I had that, I had to whisper into.
Typically, Bethan, does that have to get information back to them? Or is it, have we just always met that?
Last year, we met, oh, last year we met the Tuesday after the election, and then we had the regular Thursday meeting as well.
The Tuesday after?
Uh-huh.
And, yeah, refresh my memory, did we just do the reorganization of the board that Tuesday?
No, we had a meeting, and then there was another meeting.
We had a special meeting for hiring purposes.
And that could be, because I was like.
So when's the other?
One month.
Yes, sir. Bethan, any reason why we, I'm trying to review that myself.
I mean, why, why can't we have it on the 21st and, or, we have it on the 21st, the third Tuesday?
We just put on here, in prior years, the district has made similar scheduling adjustments to comply with the statutory requirements. It says, within 14 days.
That's 14.
I don't know that we need to do one 14 and less. That's my question. Do we have anything back to the election authorities saying that the results have been ratified?
Within the 14 days? No, not, no. You just have to get certification from them.
Whatever works for everyone, I'm, I'm good with.
I said the 21st, that's too quick, I think.
Can we, can we do the 20th instead? Because I'm living in town, the 20th.
Well, I gotta go out in town.
20 is, 20th is a Monday.
25.
Will that work for the administration? Take a look at calendars.
Would you take me out?
20th. How about the 20th? Do we have anything activities-wise that would require us to be out of the district?
Monday.
That's not helping.
Is 20th on Wednesday?
No, this is.
20th next year.
You're looking at next year's calendar.
There's a tab meeting.
Is there a tab meeting that night? That would be okay? Oh, the tab meeting starts at, at a different time.
I say the 20th if we can.
How's the, how's the calendars look there, Tony? So motion to move it to the 20th, is that right, Mr. Lewis?
Please.
Second, let's wait a second, we have to go back and amend our previous motion or reconsider.
Well, I don't think there was a motion.
We just went through it, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yes, so the 20th would be best, 20th, second. That'd help, actually help us out too with timing. Rather than, rather than it being the 14th, we move to the 20th. How's the calendar look over there?
Well, that's a lot better now.
20th, Mr. Harrison.
I think it would better check with Wes Wagner.
If we can set it for the 20th, and if he says it does not work, we can move it. But actually, we didn't even vote to set it anyway, we just let it down. Okay, so it'll be the 20th then? Okay, it's been a motion, a second, show of hands to approve the 20th. Those opposed? Six to one.
We go off a different date.
All right, next on the list is the insurance renewal rates. Insurance premiums dropped, which is nice. 5.1 percent. The district and, and the whole district just got healthier.
All right, that means more money for the teachers.
Right, that's what it probably means. We have a motion to approve the insurance premiums and plans for employee medical vision and dental insurance for the plans beginning July 1st, 2015. Second, third, fourth, and fifth. Discussion? What's the discuss? Show of hands to approve? Very good. Next on. What's that? I do want to say that we, we spoke to the insurance committee and let them know that this year we are trending healthy. We're 77 percent premium utilization ratio per member per month, which means you're paying $645 currently per member per month, and that's dropping 5 percent. The board, as we've talked to the insurance committee, we really need to look at starting, focusing on rate cap setting it. Each year, you can vote to pay over the rate cap if you want to, but that's something that I'm going to encourage the board to start thinking about.
Retired people?
Yes.
What do they pay?
Same as an employee.
Same amount the board pays an employee.
That is correct.
And how much is that?
645.31, help me out, what's that exact figure?
45.2.
It's went up over 100 bucks, ain't it?
It's gone up a lot, sir. It's gone up maybe 12, 15 percent over the past three years, averaged 5 to 6 percent annually. And that's on the retirees. So this 5 and 1/2 percent drop is, is helping the retiree.
By one.
So that's something to consider.
I know if somebody told me they had to pay around $1,400 a.
They aren't there paying for a husband and spouse or a family. That would be correct.
That just seems like a lot of money for us.
It is, but what you have to understand is that we have a very good premium, or we have a very good deductible, it's only 500. When you start messing with plans, then that's when you start dropping the cost of the plan.
$500 is good?
Yes, sir, because there's some phenomenal. We can show you an average where it's probably 2,500, the nearest school touching us, 4,500. Yeah, it's phenomenal.
Yes, it is.
Don't no one pick me up as they see me on the street.
All right. Next is the core data of the motion, so do I have a motion to approve the core data? Program evaluation is presented.
Make the motion to approve.
Especially here.
Discussion. Hearing no discussion, show of hands to approve. Those opposed? Those abstained.
I got a question.
Okay.
Hire a full-time MOSI coordinator to input data and prepare information for district administrators.
Yes.
What's that say, what's that mean?
That means that that committee that reviewed is making, one way that they could improve data entry is that if they had a full-time person that only entered data for the district. That doesn't mean the board's hiring that person. That just means this program evaluation strengths and concerns being addressed to you tonight, and we'll approve those, we'll be to hire a full-time person. But that doesn't mean you're hiring a full-time person.
But can I have that put, put in the minutes that we're not hiring a full-time person? Because by this here, it says we can.
No, but you have to understand that this was not, the board is not voting to hire a person. The board is voting to approve the program evaluation that it was completed.
And, and this is, the goals for, it's in there.
I understand, but the board did not make a motion to hire a person. The board made a motion to approve the goals, the program evaluation.
See if, see if I can re-earr this.
I understand what you're saying. If you want to put that in there, that's fine, but you haven't hired.
No, I wanted, I wanted to put it in there, that the board is not giving nobody, because I mean, this is going to be another one of these things that all of a sudden, we got an extra person, or we choose the way we do.
Well, that suffices, Mr. Harrison?
That's good.
The board realizes that we were not hiring a person to fill that position at this time, or to create that.
That's right, it shouldn't be created.
What we actually do is give you a human resources report, and we'll do that next month, right, Dr. Isaacson? That talks about the needs of the district. And if you want to hire, you hire, and if you don't, you don't.
Let's go.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the overnight request for future business leaders of America to attend the state leadership conference in Springfield, Missouri, April 12th to 14th, 2015?
Motion.
Discussion. Hearing none, show of hands to approve. Next on the list is the purchase of security equipment for the high school, the primary, intermediate. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase from Midwest Digital Systems to replace the high school's security DVR unit and additional security closed caption TV cam, uh, uh, yeah, know what it is? CCTV camera for the high school, primary, intermediate for the amount of $18,326.
I make the motion to approve the purchase.
Mr. Harrison, is that a second?
That's a second with the question.
Discussion, go ahead, Mr. Harrison.
How long has it been since we got some cameras for some of these buildings? Did we get some four years?
I got new cameras last year. What happened is that we discovered blind spots in our school, and we, you know, look for certain maintenance that have occurred. Then we make a recommendation to Mr. Murray, hey, we really would appreciate if we got a camera to cover this area. And then he usually sees that need and would do.
Mr. Murray isn't here because of a, a family issue.
How about you, high school?
We got a couple new cameras, um, oh, gosh, two years ago. I mean, we're talking about two of our cameras, but other than that, ours are old. Ours are old. I mean, push your DVR recorder window. Our recorder is down, so we can't, from our building right now, pull up any footage. We have to have Steve do it.
Do you know when the, in the stairwells, on the first floor, you know, they can get back there in the back?
Oh, yes, sir.
Do they ever put anything in there?
No, no, we don't have a camera back there, but yes, we put ourselves back there often.
Now I know what to do when you guys are looking for me. That's the only reason I asked.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, show of hands to approve? Seven to nothing. Prove the revision in technology rules, is there a motion to approve a 30-day review of proposed changes or approve the revision, technology rules and regulations, electronic devices presented to allow Hillsborough, our three students, to use personal devices with the hot guest wireless network? I wish Mr. Murray were here to discuss this a little bit.
Yeah.
You, you may table it until the next meeting if you want.
It's tabled.
Is our motion to table? Okay. Show of hands to table. Very good, seven to nothing. We won't talk about the E-rate yet, so I want to say something before we move back into executive session. If you read, you read, might have read the leader, my, an article in regards to a, a letter that was written by the superintendent on my behalf came up. The onus of responsibility is strictly on mine, on me. The superintendent acting as my employee did what I asked him to do. I was on vacation at the time, asked him to draft a response. He drafted a response, I reviewed it, I felt that it was appropriate, and I sent the letter on. I apologize to the district and the people of the district for this. I want to, I really want to push that the onus of responsibility is on me. Dr. Corman, as the superintendent, did what his boss asked him to do. I, again, am sorry for this, and that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Harrison, are you withdrawn from the?
I have withdrawn. My name is still on the ballot, but I have withdrawn. I don't have any advertisements, I don't have any signs, I have not taken anything else from.
I thought we had a policy that you had to sign something and tell, to give to him that you're resigning, just in case a freak thing come up that you're having to win. Did you put it in writing?
No.
I think you put it in writing.
That's your opinion. You're allowed to.
And I'm glad to see you go, brother.
That's very forte.
Yeah.
All right. On that fact, is there a meaning to, is there a motion to? We do need to talk about E-rate? I thought we were, it was being held because of.
One of them's canceled. The second one?
We're on H. Okay. Eyes canceled, H is soon. Okay. And the reason being is, this is all contingent upon E-rate funding, but there is a timeline that Mr. Murray has to have the application in. And this is what he's projecting, the 99,501. But 70 percent of that is federally funded, 30 percent comes from the local technology funds. But he has to have the approval to present. Now, E-rate will say, we'll pay for this, we won't pay for that, it'll cut it down, and it's my understanding he'll bring it back to you. And if you like, I don't mind getting him on the phone, he said I could call him if you have questions, but this, the E-rate's been around for years, it's very volatile, it's not a correct word.